Okay, folks, I believe it's nearing six o'clock. And for all of you that came for the lottery tonight, that was drawn last night and the winner was in a different location. So if you came with your lottery ticket tonight thinking that, you know, this was the place, I'm sorry to report, it's not. But at any rate, let us call this meeting to order on Tuesday, July, or April ninth, pardon me, not July ninth, April ninth. It is 6:00 PM and we are in the council chambers of the city of Platteville. We'll start with roll call, collect. Bob Gates.
Here.
Todd Casper.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Lynn Parrott.
Here.
Kathy Cobb.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Yep.
And before we go into any presentations or anything of that nature, I'm going to start with the man of the hour that we honor tonight, Jason Arts, who has served admirably on this council. We are sad to see him go, but we understand that a new job and some of the demands of that new job have taken his time. So we do have a little certificate we will present to him. But Jason, we truly appreciate your service to this city and on the many boards and committees that you've served on too. So please join me. Okay, we welcome many others in the council chambers tonight. Is that down? And particularly, we'll welcome some students from UW Platteville who are, I think, the majority in intro to infrastructure. So I've promised them that later in the agenda, we'll actually get to some infrastructure items. So let us then begin with our evening presentations, the first of which is the Platteville Business Incubator and Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities. Kate.
I'll just walk through a few materials.
Kate, you need to go behind the microphone and.
Hello. Hi, so my name is Kate Coziel and I'm the executive director of the Platteville Business Incubator, as well as an economic development specialist for the Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. So many of you at desks have the annual report for the Platteville Business Incubator. Last year, we went after and received Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation grant, which funded the Driftless Makers Program, and that allowed for networking events, a makers market, a podcast, all sorts of excitement, and also gave us the impetus to go after the Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference, which we'll talk about in just a minute. The incubator is up in the industry park. It's been around for about 22 years and we've had about 85 graduates. Low cost to start a business, mentoring, coaching, and advice all the way through so that you can launch. Has anyone ever heard of Delta Three? It's a little firm in town. They were there a few moons ago and one of our many success stories. So you could see that we were able to, in 2023, for the, for the year, we came in at 12% above what our budget was as far as income and 12% below as far as expenses. But there's still, there's always things that are hiding. Furnaces and air conditioning units and leaky roofs. So it is a, it's a leaky bucket up there, but it's an important component. And, and we're happy to be a part of the whole ecosystem of entrepreneurs. We do have lots of offices up there and manufacturing space. So if you know of anybody who needs space, come on up. We'll help you out. We'll get you started. And I, at that point, I entertain any conversations that the council might have regarding the incubator.
Okay, questions? Kate, are you full right now?
We are not. So we have 3,000 square feet of manufacturing and we probably have at least seven offices open, which is a drain for us because those offices still need cleaned. They still need heated. So send me your people. I need some up on the hill. Thank you.
Anybody else with any questions? Okay, Kate, your next subject.
Next, we're moving right on. If you'd like to keep your lovely souvenir copy of the annual report, please do so. And if not, leave them on your desk. We'll collect them and we'll recycle them. We like to be a little paper conscious. So the Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference, has anyone heard about this yet? Yes, everyone in the city. We're gonna, we competed against five other cities across the state of Wisconsin to bring the first Connecting Entrepreneurial Communities Conference to Platteville, and it's coming this May. It started with a brochure that shows everything about Platteville and how marvelous it is. And we won out over Baraboo, Eau Claire, Chippewa Falls, and then Monroe, because they're part of our district. They just said, no Platteville, you go. Because how could they compete with beautiful Platteville? And so you have materials here in English and in Spanish inviting people to come. It's $80. You're going to be able to eat more than $80 worth of food at this event. So I highly recommend any community members, whatever municipalities you live in, if, even if you're an entrepreneur and you want to see how things really work behind the scenes, please consider attending. We'll have 16 workshops. The interesting thing about this particular conference is it's not going to take place in some big conference center. It's gonna, that's gonna start here. It's gonna be in this room and it's gonna be down in the auditorium. And we're gonna do workshops down at the movie theater and up at the library and at Roundtree Gallery. I think that's it. An evening event up at the museum. So it's really a rural entrepreneurial conference set in a rural town and they'll be able to stop and visit the business owners up and down Main Street. I think it's gonna be really fun and educational. And it's really positioning, I think, Platteville as a place to be, this region to be as a place to be if you want to be an entrepreneur. Lower costs, safe schools. Come here, work here, live here, live more. And then also in your collection here is sort of my ulterior motive to get people to come to Platteville is this Driftless Getaways magazine. And so this actually showcases like some really wonderful things about the region. You know, supper clubs and hiking spots and interesting, unique amenities. And at the very back is slightly less than subtle ploy that you should move out here, live here, bring your children, your family, your tax dollars, come right here. And so these materials are draft materials. Feel free to hang on to these or again, leave them if you don't want. The last thing is this conference is gonna end at noon on Friday and the 150 to 200 people that we're expecting to show up in town are gonna be dismissed at noon with a brown bag, their Driftless Getaways guide, an event listing of what's happening that weekend specifically, and then their Driftless, if I get it right, roadmap, which shows all the really cool, fun things in about six or eight counties and little places that don't get advertising and they don't really have a chance to spend a lot of money. So this is all a, a way to get people out here and leaving their cash here. So it's gonna be great, educational, more people will see the region and there'll be, you know, money left up and down the street. So it's, I, I think it'll be a, a great success and continue in our leadership and entrepreneurism. Any questions?
Just a comment. Thank you for this. When I read the digital one this weekend, I couldn't believe how many neat things there are in Southwest Wisconsin that I didn't even know about. So this is great.
Well, good. I'm so glad. I wanted, you know, and I think what we'll be able to do with this afterwards is ship this off in digital format. It'll all be available digital, but then also in print format to places like Chicago and Rockford, Minneapolis, and use that as a ploy to, you know, work in tandem with our tourism partners to draw people in. Because tourism and economic development, they kind of go hand in hand, you know? Tourism, they try. Economic development, they stay. So it's a good setup. Any other questions? Yes.
Yeah. I have a question about this Driftless Getaway. So this is what you created.
Yeah.
Because I was thinking, well, it's just in the tourism report, but this is something new that you've made up.
Yeah, my, my allies in tourism are well aware of this. We've worked in partnership with them. But this is, it's kind of a half breed. It's a little bit of tourism, but it's, it's written, designed to have people come and try the region. My long-term goal is that they'll come and they'll spend more money here or they'll come and live here. But it's, it's very much in tandem with tourism. But it's, you don't pay to get in this. We just pick weird, wonderful things that people would want to try. And it's written like your cousin is saying, come on over. I'm gonna take you to the Burton Tavern and then we're gonna go to the AD German Warehouse and we're gonna end up hiking and while losing. So.
That was very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Comment. It's just too bad. I wish you had a little bit more enthusiasm for what you're doing.
Sorry, Kathy.
Good job.
Thank you. That's, thank you. Yeah.
Kathy, I echo your, your comment. Kate tells us she's gonna retire and then she's just gonna kind of do whatever. And I said, I think I like you better in a box. I mean, you know, there's an advantage to having you in a kind of a space.
Yeah. All right. Very good.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna collect these little maps because I have to go show this to about 12 other committees. So you can have everything but the little map.
Oh, and those are right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, you did national. Okay. So, all right, another presentation we have tonight is the annual library report and we welcome the library director, Jessie Lee Jones, to the podium on this National Library Workers Day, I believe. Did I get that right? Okay.
Evening, everybody. My name is Jessie Lee Jones. I'm the director at the Platteville Public Library. I'm proud to say I've been here almost 10 years now. And so today I just wanted to give you a little update. It's National Library Week, so we are doing all sorts of fun things at the library. And I just wanted to have an opportunity to mention to you all what we've been up to over the past year. So you'll see here, just a little bit of by the numbers. I don't plan to read all of this to you, but you can see some of the highlighted items that we're particularly proud of or items that have impacted our workflows or workload around the library. So that's for you to peruse. So the next thing you'll see are just kind of our five main focus, like how we focus our energy at the library. We start by building community connections. We're trying to partner and collaborate wherever possible. We love to participate in our Main Street community. We're looking forward to hosting the CEC conference in a couple of months or a month, I guess. Yeah. So we provide a variety of programs, thanks to many community donors, volunteers, and partner organizations. And we are very strong partners with our school district. Did I skip one? I'm, I went backwards. Did I, did you guys see this one? No. Okay. Well, that's the one I was just talking about. So again, we like to do a lot of programming and partnerships throughout our community. So then we like to build awareness. We like our community to know that we're here and hear, hear what we have to offer. So we love, you'll see us in parades or at outreach events at the city park. So we support our community wherever we can and try to make meaningful connections. So as you know, we've been in our building for seven years and we are very committed to maintaining that building and keeping it as the treasure that it is in our Main Street community. So this year, there's an example of some of the things that we did. We worked through painting. That was quite interesting. We're always working on keeping our upholstery clean and keeping our carpets clean. And we like to have fun too. So you'll see us maintaining some whimsy through our seasonal decor, trying to attract new visitors or new interest in what we have to offer. And then we invest in staff development and we are committed to creating a positive workplace and excellent service for all that use the library. We welcome several new team members and we're excited to have them. We also deeply value our community's commitment to the library and the resources that they've devoted to us. And so here you can see some of the projects that we were able to achieve in 2023, thanks to community support and donations. And then we like to have fun. So we like to make sure that people see that we are enthusiastic about the work that we do and we try to bring that both to our work and when we're out in the community. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any questions for Jessie for the library? And you've, and.
Yes, and so in the back here, you can find our new fun little infographic that just kind of breaks down the library year in review.
And Lynn is our council rep to the library board. Any, any additional comments, Lynn?
No, I just, I just love the effort that the staff has in making sure that the community gets what they need. I, we, I applaud them so much. They go above and beyond. So no.
And I should thank everyone that came to a lot of the library over the weekend. We had about 80 in attendance and it was a really good time. So.
Hey, thank you, Jessie. Okay, we'll move on to the, the next item on our agenda, which is consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you would prefer separate discussion or action on any of these items. So first, we have the council minutes from March 26th. We have payment of bills. We have the financial reports for March. Appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight I have one appointment to the airport commission to, to fill a partial term ending November 1. That is Lynette Dornak. Licenses, one and two, your operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol as in your packet. A walk-run permit for Saturday, April 13th, starting 11 o'clock in the morning. This is the Out of the Darkness Campus Walk. Announcing the campus or the council organizational meeting next Tuesday, April 16th at 5:00 PM. We have the write-off of uncollectible personal property taxes. There were a list in, there was a list in your packet and then ordinance 24-06 amending 7.04 of the municipal code. This had to do with the lead service lines. And there was, when the ordinance was sent off to DNR, they found an error in the table. So this actually just corrects the error in the table. So your preference, please, on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
Okay. All right. Kathy tried, but that's okay. We'll take Bob and Lynn. We're gonna have to get closer to our microphone. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Colette will vote. Gates.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Cobb.
Yes.
Arts.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. I'll first turn to council members and Mr. Gates.
Yes, I'd like to introduce the newest director of the Mining and Rolla Jameson Museums, Cody Grabhorn. And some of you may recognize Cody. He's a 2015 graduate of UW Platteville. And after he graduated, he went to Lehigh University in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania and earned his master's in history. And most recently has been the, see, the Ontario County Historical Society Director in Cannon Dagua, New York. So welcome back to Platteville and welcome to the museums.
I have had one person asked to speak during this time period. Molly, I can't see where you are. Molly.
Thank you, council. My name is Molly Bonn. Live at 320 Monroe Street. And I'm a field representative for Congressman Derek Van Orden. Just want to give a quick legislative update. We are constituent service first office. So last year, we closed over 800 cases and returned over $500,000 back to constituents. And we were able to assist several veterans to get 100% disability rating. You can find more information on our website if you do need help with a federal agency. A few weeks ago, Congressman Van Orden visited the Platteville High School and spoke to some students about his background, how he got engaged in civics and his experiences as a freshman congressman. He really enjoyed his visits with the students here. In March, he voted in favor for the final 2024 appropriations package. The package wasn't perfect, but it provided responsible funding for our national security and defense healthcare system with funding for medical research such as Alzheimer's and funding 22,000 more border patrol agents as well. It also included over $26 million for funding for the third congressional district. He continues to work on the farm bill. Recently, he introduced legislation to increase US Reserve and National Guard military leave. He, on the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, he joined as a co-sponsor of the Build Act of 2023, which would authorize new grants for small and rural agencies serving fewer than 50,000 residents to upgrade local law enforcement and fire department facilities. Lastly, he co-sponsored the Social Security Fairness Act of 2023 to repeal provisions that reduce social security benefits for individuals who receive other benefits. So two events that we have upcoming that I want to make the council and the public aware. We do have the Veterans Affairs Committee will be coming and doing a VA field hearing at Western Technical College in La Crosse. So you can reach out to myself or our office for more details on that. And I will be hosting mobile office hours on April 30th at the Lancaster Library from 10 to noon. If you do have an issue with a federal agency, please come talk to me. Or if you want to share your comment or opinion with Congressman Van Orden. So our job is to serve you guys. So please reach out to our office at any point. So thank you, council.
Thank you, Molly. Okay, those were all of the citizens' comments, observations, and petitions I was aware of. Anybody else on council? Okay. Reports. We have several reports in our packet today. We have the Water and Sewer Commission Report. Kathy or Ken, anything to add?
No additions. We meet tomorrow.
We meet tomorrow. Okay. Historic Preservation Commission, Ken?
No additions to that.
Okay, and we have, where else? Police and Fire Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to add.
Okay, there were other reports in the packet. The Water and Sewer Financial Report, the Airport Financial Report, the Fire Facility Report, the Department Progress Reports. Clint, is there anything you want to highlight in the Fire Facility Report?
I might can bring out some of the main points here. For those that have seen the graphic, you're gonna notice immediately that the original, or the, the upper line on the profile of the building has changed. We're switching from a flat roof over the training area and the foyer to a gabled roof to kind of match that residential type of feel. So, you know, it looks kind of a little bit more of the houses to settle in there. We are having continued development meetings with our engineering team. Our construction managers are there also in these types of meetings. Over the last month, we've met in regards to civil engineering, utilities, landscaping, interior elevations, interior fixtures, interior architect, plumbing, heating systems, and interior finishes. With all these types of maneuvers, we're, we're still kind of focused though on those considerations on function, longevity, costs, and aesthetics of the building to make sure that it's still something that looks nice and that we're proud of as a community. With that as well, we're still kind of on a timeline in which we're anticipating the raising of OE Gray in the, later in 2024 in the November timeframe. Groundbreaking on the new facility anticipated for March of 2025 pending weather. And then to have substantial completion on the building about a year later in April of 2026. Madam President.
Anybody with questions from the council or Clint on the Fire Facility?
If I can just make one more point. A couple of questions and concerns have kind of come our way in conjunction. You're also gonna see activity on West Adams Street this summer. And working with the city, with Howard, with Delta Three, our engineer in that project, we're gonna be able to absorb some of the, what we had for initial expenses on that fire project into the city's street project, taking expenses away from ourselves and townships and kind of the, the city taking on those things all the way up to the inside edge of the sidewalk on those projects. That'll be on West Adams. And then we have consideration also for this evening with a Court Street project that would kind of accomplish some of the same types of elements. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, Ken?
I have a question here on your project report.
Or the city manager?
City manager.
Okay.
And it's work with code enforcement officer on No Mo May and Creeping Charlie survey. Could you talk about those two, please?
Yes, and working with that, we have conversation going on with the Planning Commission. There are two community surveys that were put out, one in regards to ideas and thoughts and preferences on a No Mo May or multiple types of efforts related to leniency and enforcement during that month. And then there is one coming out in regards to Creeping Charlie as we build recommendations for the Planning Commission to entertain here in the, probably next month.
I, I gave you a copy of this thing about Creepin' Charlie. So I recommend that you certainly take a look at it because it's made up by experts. The one expert is Melinda Myers. She's written 20 books and she's an award-winning garden expert. So I certainly recommend that you look at her advice as far as Creepin' Charlie.
Thank you. And if you have other concerns or any of you folks or folks listening at home, by all means, you can run those towards myself, towards our enforcement officer, or towards members of the Planning Commission as we plan on having discussion on that here in the near future.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the Department Progress Reports or Facility, Fire Facility Report? Now, we'll move into the action portion of our agenda. The first item on our agenda then is the resolution relative to the 2024-2026 Roundtree Bank Stabilization Repair Grant. Howard?
Yes, thank you. Every even year, the DNR accepts grant applications for environmental projects. And then they need to be completed by the end of the second year after the award. This type of project is to reduce stream bank erosion. And the project is a maximum of $300,000. DNR would award up to $150,000 of matching grant. In 2018, we received a grant. $75,000 was the maximum toward a $150,000 project to make stream bank repairs in three locations. Two of those sites were on university property. The other was on the Chamber of Commerce. The actual cost came in just under $152,000. DNR, DNR's portion came in at just under $72,000. The university at $47,500. The city's portion ended up being slightly more than $32,000. We also received a grant in 2020 for three locations that has not been completed yet. So this grant request is due April 15th of every even year. If we were to do so, this would require the governing body to submit a resolution acknowledging and pledging the local match funding. As discussed at a previous meeting, we have three potential locations. One is just upstream of the Chestnut Street Bridge. Another one is, the other two are just upstream of the J-Man Stone Bridge, Railroad Bridge out there. We have photos, aerial photos. Our total costs are not expected to exceed $200,000. So the city's responsibility would be 50% or up to $100,000. One thing that was not in your packet last time, we have included an unsigned copy. There's a signed copy or I don't, I wasn't able to put that together prior to the packet going out. But I do acknowledge that the, the unsigned copy is, is the working agreement that was signed in November of 2021, paragraph two describing the duties and responsibilities regarding stream bank stabilization. If we were to do this, this would designate, like I said, up to $100,000 in CIP funds from our discretionary funds for 2025. And we have a motion. And in our attachments, we have the resolution itself, the overview, detailed photos of each of the sites, and a copy of the working agreement.
Okay, questions from council?
Howard, I had a question. The three sites that we would be requesting a grant for this time, were they identified in 2020 but just not included in the grant request?
That's correct.
2020?
That's correct, for budgetary reasons.
Okay, other questions?
So this grant request is due April 15th. That's what I'm seeing.
We've we've been here before with grant requests. If we receive the grant, are we required to take? Accept it?
No.
No, we aren't.
We we can and have declined grants in the past. It's not desirable. You know, what ends up happening is then DNR would go to the next community on their list and offer them the funding.
And so we would be committing for two thousand and twenty-five up to a hundred thousand dollars out of the CIP? What it, how much is our CIP? Total?
Well.
Well, we don't know that, do we?
No, but I mean, on average.
We can we can talk about historically. Historically, we have had about eight hundred thousand of CIP funds to spend on on items other than street reconstruction.
So just to clarify.
Thousand with eight hundred thousand, give or take, it's a sizable chunk of the CIP.
All right, just had a clarification. So the city did agree with the Platteville Community Arboretum Group that we would partake in these every two years. That was this agreement that's written up in front of us that because I'm looking at the bottom and said the city will budget for the required fifty percent matching funds to accept the DNR grant.
It depends on how you read that. You know, there is. It does say if stream bank stabilization is desired, the city shall submit a grant request and the city will budget. It's my opinion that the council is the one who has to be convinced to desire that because you would be committing city funds. You know, it certainly the desire of the PCA group. They're very committed to maintaining the trail and and doing what's best for the trail. And they certainly desire that. I'm sure there's one or two people that want to comment on that. But, you know, ultimately, it's up to you all to to determine whether this is desired in my in my understanding of the of this agreement.
But I have a question about the funding. Let's say the one hundred thousand dollars is included in the two thousand and twenty-five budget. But if the same thing happens with this grant, we were to get it, but the project doesn't start in two thousand and twenty-five, it's rolled, you know, extended until two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven. Does that money just roll over?
That would be that would be a permission that would have to be given by the council at the time. I believe we have carryovers on on the on the agenda later tonight that that are would be a similar case.
And does it matter that Adam's name is still on this working working agreement? Doesn't matter? Okay.
No, he was he was the city manager at the time and and that's it's a valid agreement.
Okay, as Howard indicated, we have had some people register in favor of this stream bank stabilization grant, and we've had one person asked to speak. So we'll start with those who have registered in favor. Dave Carnahan, four thousand nine hundred and fifty-one U.S. Highway one fifty-one, Platteville. Dina and Bill Grotz, four thousand three hundred and sixty-seven Jewel Lane, Platteville. And Tim Dice, one fifteen Moonlight Drive, Platteville. Asking to speak tonight is, I believe, the president of PCA or you? No, president. No, you're not. Oh, Joe is the president. Okay. Asking to speak tonight is Bob Hunthausen, ten forty-three Woodlands. So you can go to the microphone.
So I speak in public fairly often, but when I get up here, I'm awfully nervous, so bear with me. Gene Weber asked me to speak for him tonight on behalf of this, in part because in that agreement that you guys have in your package, that's my signature. This agreement was created by PCA with help from Howard, help from the city attorneys, and also in working with Adam as court as well. I've also been asked to speak for Wayne Woodard's tonight, so I'm your fill-in guy tonight. And Wayne asked me to speak for him. He's the director of the Regional, Platteville Regional Chamber. I'm the president of the Platteville Regional Chamber. Okay, so I want to start out and just tell you a little bit. I know many of you guys are very familiar with PCA and what we do and some not so much. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about what PCA is about. PCA stands for the Platteville Community Arboretum. Okay, we are the local organization that maintains and beautifies the David Caney Roundtree Branch Trail along the stream from Katie's Garden, the university area, all the way to the back of Walmart and the bridge that leads to the the trail to Belmont. That trail belongs to the city. PCA, again, what we do is maintain and beautify that trail. We have four teams of volunteers, total of fifty volunteers that work April through October. Okay, and those folks clean the trail. They remove invasive species. They clean up after flooding, they repair, and there's a lot of commitment to returning the environment to its natural state. Okay? As well as our team of volunteers, we have two part-time volunteer coordinators that lead these groups. Those groups, the four teams each work from April to October in a two-hour work team for those six months and in some cases longer. Our two part-time coordinators lead that group. We also have three hundred due paying members, folks that support the trail financially every year and and hopefully use the trail. We also have a thirteen-person board. We have forty local community businesses that pay an annual supporting due that helps helps us with our with our job. PCA has an annual budget of approximately forty, or I'm sorry, sixty thousand dollars. Okay, the big hitters in this annual budget are wages, insurance, plants, trees, and seed that we use to to maintain the trail. And then, of course, we have our equipment and our repairs of those equipment. PCA fundraises annually for this for the entirety of this budget. We also raise an additional twenty thousand dollars per year for our endowment. And PCA has built a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar endowment of which goes to hopefully sustainably keep our commitment to the city for annual trail repair, which we have an annual commitment to to match up to twenty-five hundred dollars of what the city does on the trail as in terms of repair. And also our endowment is someday supposed to sustainably pay those part-time coordinators as well. Okay? The neat thing about our teams on the trail is they have become a community of their own. You know, we've got the senior center and folks get together and commune there, but the the volunteering on the trail has really taken on a life of itself and it's its own community at this point. This overall PCA is is totally about partnership. I mean, I want to complement our partnership with the Park and Recs Group. The Fire Department helps us on a lot of projects. And the city maintenance team also helped PCA when we have heavy-duty repairs like taking debris out of the out of the stream and things like that. We've had partnerships with UWP Reclamation and Ecology Groups, and we've had partnership with UWP Construction Group. Okay? Recently, PCA, as well as our normal fundraising fundraiser to replace our gator and also to to double the size of our equipment shed. Now, next up, I'm these comments and Gene Weber asked me to read these to you word for word. So we're going to test my reading skills here. This is regarding the two thousand and twenty-four Streamside Stabilization Grant Request. I am Gene Weber of twelve eighty-five Union Street. I'm currently in Minnesota at my grandson's university baseball game. I've asked Bob to share the following with you. I do seriously appreciate appreciate your community service, and we do, in the community, attempt to reciprocate. In due diligence to our many donors and fundraisers, I am here to remind the city and council of the commitment made during the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen trail paving and lighting effort, and specifically the Streamside Stabilization Commitment. I recognize this is likely new information for many of you. A bit of background. In the spring of two thousand and sixteen, halfway through the trail paving and lighting project, major donors and fundraisers asked the Moving Platteville Outdoors Trail Steering Committee to look at protecting the new trail from the stream itself. The MPO Leadership Group headed up by three nonprofits, Platteville Community Arboretum, Platteville Community Fund, and Building Platteville, plus the City of Platteville. MPO asked major donors and fundraisers, Myron Tranel, Bob Digman, Jim Schneller, and maybe others to drive the trail and cite concerns. The city suggested that there was a two-year DNR grant cycle for stream stabilization and committed to inspecting, writing, and writing the grant requests and budgeting for the match to assure the trail was protected on an ongoing basis. With that, we continued the project. I represented the MPO Committee and PCA in reaching all the mutual commitment agreements with the council, later documented in the agreement that you guys have in your package. If I have interpreted Howard's numbers correctly, the cost of the city match since two thousand and seventeen was thirty-two thousand, two hundred plus. The budgeted one one hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred for the two thousand and twenty Streamside Stabilization Grant has not yet been done, but twice extended amounts to one hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred. This is an average of less than twenty thousand dollars a year to protect a one point seven million dollar investment. The stream by nature will continue to erode the trail. And as long as we diligently address those situations early on, we will keep the cost to minimum. The three sites that needed to be addressed with this grant request were identified in two thousand and twenty. And if you skip this cycle, Howard shares it will be two thousand and twenty-seven before they will be fixed. Clearly, I promised donors and fundraisers that were skeptical that the city would keep their commitments, that if I was able, I would work with the city to assure that. I do apologize to Howard for being a bit of a nuisance at times as I attempt to honor this commitment. To honor your commitment to MPO Moving Platteville Outdoors, PCA volunteers, five hundred donors, and forty fundraisers, I request your vote of approval to move ahead with the two thousand and twenty-four grant request. That's from Gene Weber. The following is from Wayne Woodard, Executive Director of the Platteville Regional Chamber. The Platteville Regional Chamber would like to express its support for the Platteville Community Arboretum and the PCA Trail System. This beautiful amenity is widely used by the Platteville community by residents of all ages and capabilities. The most recent trail counts from July of twenty-three show that approximately four hundred and fifty people use the trail for some type of activity on a daily basis. It is truly amazing to see the community usage at all the times of the day. Many utilize the trail by themselves, but many in groups as well. It is also amazing to see the number of nonprofit and service organizations that also have geared activities, events, and fundraisers around the trail itself. As the tourism entity for the City of Platteville, the Chamber also recognizes the PCA and the trail system as one of our main attractions. Throughout COVID, outdoor reaction, outdoor recreation became more important to many, and this attracted people from around our state and beyond to come and explore our community and region. Not only did they take advantage of our recreational activities, but they also stayed in our lodgings properties. The opportunities we have here for outdoor recreation, which include the trail system, has allowed us to increase our local and county tourism revenue levels to higher than the state average. We have depicted the trail system and bike riding in many of our publications and advertising spends over the last several years. And not just for spring and summer enjoyment, but also for sharing winter fat tire biking and coast country skiing on the trail as well. The Platteville Regional Chamber and Wisconsin Welcome Center is also a financial supporter of PCA. We recognize that this amenity provides us a method to produce a healthier community, but also gives us a tool to increase tourism and bring economic value to our businesses and lodging properties. It is not unusual for there to be three or four cars with bike racks parked at the Welcome Center each morning during the summer months. For this reason, later, last year, we increased our financial commitment to the PCA. We are very fortunate to have this well-maintained trail system here for our community to utilize and enjoy, but also very fortunate to be able to promote it for others to come and enjoy as well for the benefit of our local economy.
We've heard from Gene Weber, we've heard from Bob, and we've heard from Wayne Woodard relative to the trail and this grant. Other questions?
Just a comment, I guess. At this point, it appears to almost be an integrity issue in the sense that the city agreed to support something in two thousand and fifteen, and I don't see where, you know, we can stop at this point. It's like many other things we've agreed to support that are that are costly over time. And perhaps now is the time to spend some money as we agreed to and move forward. It's my thoughts. Thank you.
I'm curious, did we not apply for the grant in two thousand and twenty-two, or did we apply and just not receive one?
We did not apply in two thousand and twenty-two because of the ongoing on of the ongoing work from the previous one?
Okay.
Very supportive of the trail. I agree with Todd that appears we made this commitment was before my time here, but I just think it's important for everyone to understand that a hundred thousand dollars is a huge commitment out of our CIP. So this decision will not be taken lightly. But the impact is roughly, I think, the number that that we have used to complete one block of street completely for water, sewer, paving, sidewalk, all that. It's about a million dollars. And our street program, we're seventy-five to a hundred-year rotation. So to take that much money out of the CIP is really challenging. Anybody else? Does anybody have any motion they want to offer or?
I'll offer a motion. I move to approve Resolution twenty-four XX, committing to a local match of up to a hundred thousand dollars for stream stream bank repairs at sites one, two, and three is listed in the grant application.
Got the motion.
So we have a motion by Todd and a second by Ken to.
to approve submitting this grant for 2020, for the 2024-2026 stabilization grant request up to, committing up to a hundred thousand dollars of city money. Everybody understand the, all right, Collette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yeah.
Dos?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the next agenda item then, which is Contract 1-24, the Soden and Grace Street Reconstruction.
Thank you. This is for water sanitary sewer storm and street reconstruction of Soden Street between Water and Grace and Grace Street from Madison Street to the cul-de-sac. We had seven bidders. The low bidder is H. James &amp; Sons. They have done many successful projects for the city and local developers. If awarded, our, the plan would be to start in June and have it be completed in October. The low bid is nine fourteen, six seventeen, and seventy-five cents. We have a large under budget, even after deducting the over budget from West Adams Street. There's still over five hundred, there's almost five hundred eighteen thousand dollars remaining. And we will have a separate discussion next on, on options for that. At this point, staff is recommending awarding Contract 1-24, Soden and Grace to H. James &amp; Sons at that bid price.
Nine fourteen, six seventeen, seventy-five.
Correct.
Questions? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll move to award Contract 1-24, Soden and Grace Street Reconstruction to H. James &amp; Sons at the bid price of nine hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second it also.
Hey, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Todd to approve this contract with H. James &amp; Sons for Soden and Grace Street. Collette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda then are budget considerations for the savings on Soden and Grace Street on this reconstruction project. Howard?
We, we had discussion last time and there were two options listed. One was to approve additional infrastructure projects with the, with the amount that we've saved. The other was to not borrow, basically reduce the borrowing. It was consensus of the council to, to move forward with potential additional infrastructure projects. What we're looking at, what staff is recommending, is installing a concrete turn apron on Lewis Street where fire trucks returning from a call would make a, make the turns off the street into the new fire facility. It would entail removing the three inches of asphalt, putting in gravel base, eight-inch concrete pavement. Estimated cost, including engineering, is roughly fifty thousand dollars. Staff is also recommending that we reconstruct North Court Street between Lewis and Adams. It was last reconstructed in nineteen eighty-one. The other streets have been all reconstructed since 2005. We estimate the cost for this block at just under four hundred, three thousand dollars. Doing these combined projects would require no additional borrowing. Staff has reviewed the other projects that were previously listed in the twenty-four to twenty-six timeframe in our CIP plan. And those two appear to be the best choice. Like I say, we do have other streets and, and we could discuss those, but I've looked at those. Some of the streets had, for example, two blocks that we would want to do, and we could only do one block. So is it preferable to do one block out of two or half of a length of street with the budget available? I don't think so. I think it would be better to just do this one block of street. And as the city manager pointed out earlier in the fire facility discussion, what this would do is this would basically replace from, replace the sidewalk, from sidewalk to sidewalk on that block of North Court Street. And that would remove that, those costs from the fire facility project. Because of the, because of the parking lots and other things that are going on that side of the building, entryways, they're going to need to replace a lot of the sidewalk anyway. As long as we continue to coordinate, we can do all of that and, and not have to share that cost with the fire facility project and the townships.
Okay, questions? So that the total for Court and Lewis is four hundred and fifty-three. We approved money for Adams too out of this overage, is that correct?
Yes.
How much was that?
There was forty-seven thousand some dollars, but that, that was taken out off the top. The, the Soden and Grace project itself came in five hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars.
Sixty-one, I think it was.
Five hundred and sixty-two thousand under budget. And so after you deduct the forty-seven-six from the West Adams Street, there's still just under five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars left for potential future projects.
Howard, on your drawing, I see there's also evidently a concrete pad at the junction of Adams and Chestnut?
That's part of the West Adams Street project.
That's part of the West Adams Street project, okay. So all of those together end up being about five hundred thousand. Those three. And so there's, we still, I mean, and we don't need to spend the other sixty thousand.
It, it will end up being, it will end, right, it'll be about sixty-five thousand plus or minus. That can be looked at for future, rolled over into a future CIP.
Howard, I, I don't remember if it was at Water and Sewer or someplace else that you mentioned the piece of road that was south of Adams Court, the part of Court Street that's south of Adams Street. I think you talked about an issue there. Is that correct?
Um, there's, there's a, a short section of sanitary sewer that serves, I believe, the church and the St. Mary's School Building. It's in extremely poor shape. But that would be, that would be a water and sewer cost, so I, I didn't bring it up.
Didn't bring that up, okay. I just don't want to forget that. Because we don't want to make new roads there and then the next year dig it up and put a new sources, a new sewer pipe in. That just, just doesn't seem like a good plan. All right, any more questions on budget considerations relative to the savings on Soden and Grace Street? Howard has maker, made a recommendation that in addition to the Adams Street project was, which was plus or minus forty-seven thousand, we spent about fifty thousand on Lewis Street to make a concrete area where the fire trucks turn in to the new station. And that we redo Court Street on the east side of this new fire station at a cost of about four hundred and three, four hundred and three, four hundred thousand, four hundred and three thousand. I can't say that right. All right, any questions on that?
Just comment, I wanted to thank Howard and his staff for coming up with these plans and going through these numbers and, and figuring out a good way for us to use the money. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And there's no doubt we can repair streets. Okay. Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to direct staff to design and bid the reconstruction of North Court Street from Adams to Lewis Street and install concrete on Lewis Street where the fire trucks will return to the fire facility.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Bob and a second by Kathy to approve moving forward with the projects proposed on Lewis Street and Court Street. Collette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the last item on our action agenda tonight is the 2023 Budget Carryovers to 2024, Budget Amendment Number One. Nicola?
Thank you. So each year, as we close up the books and complete the accounting for the prior year, we review and see if there are any projects that were not complete at the end of the prior year and any other line items that might be requested to be carried over. This year, we have seen an unprecedented amount of projects that have not completed and also some line item requests. Just to review those briefly, on the attachment to the staff note, you'll see the first one is City Hall Phase 3A, budgeted at fifty thousand. There was actually several pieces over several years to this project. Carryover request is forty-four thousand, six forty. That'll be added to some funding in 2024 for this project. The elevator control boards suffered from supply chain issues. And so we're hoping to complete those in 2024 for eighty thousand dollars. IT infrastructure improvements coming in 2024, fifty thousand dollars. The incubator parking lot was begun but not completed. So forty-six thousand, six thirty being requested to carry over. Another part of the Phase 3A project was the audiovisual aspects to various parts of City Hall, requesting to carry over remaining funds of forty-two thousand, two sixty-one. Security camera project was, a, a, a large amount was completed in 2023, but there is some funds to carry over for completion of that project for forty-five thousand, five hundred and two dollars. The police department radio system upgrade has not yet been invoiced. It's a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The fire department air packs, which were grant, mostly grant funded. But the delivery and invoicing took place in 2024, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, a hundred and two dollars. The radio repeater project delayed due, due to installation issues. So requesting to carry over thirty-seven thousand dollars. The roadside mower tractor in the Public Works Department, thirty thousand dollars. It was ordered in December, 2023. The non-motorized comp plan was begun but not completed. So nineteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five being requested to carry over. The fascinal storm sewer was a project that came in a lot higher than what was budgeted. And so the council canceled that project. And so those tax levy funds that were set aside for that project are available, requesting to contribute twelve thousand of those funds to the elevator board projects. We've seen in many of our projects where, from when things were budgeted to when they get ordered, to when they're delivered, the prices are increasing substantially. And so sometimes we're, we're looking for places to fund things. Electronic access fence project will complete in 2024, carryover of thirteen thousand, five fifty-four. The hot water heater project was able to be completed with a small amount of funding, but those funds are needed to cover additional cost for the mower, eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The community room replacement of tables and chairs did not take place in '23, requesting to carry over the twenty-six thousand, which includes thirteen thousand committed from the, from the foundation for the library. And then for the museum, the preservation plan project final invoice will be received in 2024 for eight thousand, three ninety-seven. The museum parking project, this is one piece of a multi-year potential project. And ninety thousand was set aside in reserves for this project, requested to be carried over. And then the rock school improvement project is in progress. But the unspent funds would be combined with additional rock school CIP funding for twenty-three thousand, five forty-seven. So the total for CIP projects, one million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six, to include funding both from tax levy and reserves, which is approximately the eight hundred thousand that we talked about, and then other revenue sources such as grants and borrowing. And then the line item, budget items, I won't go through all of these, but you can see those requested by the departments when they had a surplus in a line item and they need to put it towards a special project that they are requesting to complete. The total for the general fund line item carryovers is seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. Any questions from the council?
Any questions on these? Seems like an extraordinary amount of CIP funds.
It's a lot more than usual, but it reflects issues with supply chain. And I think also we, we are just undertaking a, a large, larger number of projects, partly, I think, because of funding sources that are a result of the pandemic.
Any questions? Otherwise, this is an action item. So the, the requested action is to approve Budget Amendment One, which would enable the carryover of capital fund carryovers of just over a million, one-point-one million dollars and general fund carryovers of around seventy-five thousand. Questions? Do I hear, do I hear any motions?
Make a motion to approve the carryover, one million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars in the CIP fund and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seven dollars in the general fund per the attached schedules.
Second then.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Todd to approve the request, the budget carryovers that have been requested, both in the CIP and the general fund. Collette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, those are the action items for tonight. We'll move on to the information and discussion item. There's one. This would be a resolution on land acquisition. And it would be specifically for a grant application, a DNR land acquisition grant application for east, for the east side trail expansion. Joe, do you start?
I'll get it started, yeah.
Joe, that's, that's that Joe that's going to start, not that.
We'll, we'll do a tag team. So the Platteville Community Arboretum is working on a plan to extend the Round G Branch Trail, basically from its location where it crosses under East Side, Business Highway 151 East, following the old railroad right away to East Side Road. Then they're also looking at acquiring a property on Valley Road, kind of in the vicinity of the, the dog park, that would be used for trail parking, access trail, trailhead, basically, that would basically replace the parking that they have near the entrance to the rock quarry. There's some issues that they have with that access point. So this would alleviate some of those concerns. But to help with that whole project, they'd like to apply for a grant from DNR to assist with the costs of acquiring these properties. So similar to a lot of projects like this, the city has to be the applicant, especially because we would end up owning the property, just like we do with the trail locations now. But obviously, the PCA is doing all the heavy lifting on the, the project and the application and working with the property owner. So based on that, I'm going to pass it off to Joe from the PCA.
Well, Bob Houndousen gave like a five-minute presentation.
Well, Bob Hundhausen gave like a five-minute presentation on great the PCA was, so let's bypass some of my speeches.
Joe, start by introducing yourself.
Hi, I'm Joe Jaquenow. I am president of the PCA. So again, yeah, Bob Hundhausen said a lot of great things about PCA, so I'll bypass some of that. But what the Arboretum is proposing is a DNR land acquisition grant for properties that connect to the east side road there, and also an individual property along Valley Road. Joe here also said the city would be the applicant. That's important to understand. And also, it's more to understand the grant requires a resolution of council. So there are three specific things we're looking for from you guys. Number one is should the city apply for the acquisition grant of east side properties? Should the city add Valley Road to the application? And is the city willing to contribute funds to this property? I think what we'll do is just break it down into each section. So the first one again is should the city apply for the east side grant properties? And do you guys have any questions about these properties, these acreages or these values?
Questions or comments? Joe, your idea is to acquire the properties and build a trail? What is your vision here?
Right, so this is strictly an acquisition project. It's so hard to put both of those together, to acquire the lands and build the trail at the same time. If you look at like, do you guys have maps of the properties? Right, so there are certain properties that are just wider than the trail because landowners wanted to, I don't want to say give up more land, but for instance, harms his land by cutting a path through his trail, he wanted to sell all that land north of him, and that just makes sense. We had to add that. Also, Rose Meyer, I think, only owned three properties, and to cut a swath through that, he just said, we'll just take the whole thing, because once you cut through there, it's going to be difficult for me to do anything with that property. So it's not just a straight swath, but our plan is eventually to put a trail on that property, but it also gives us acres to do something in the future. You know, that's limitless. You could mimic something like what Dubuque has with butterfly gardens or picnic areas, whatever you want to do. But at this point, we are certainly not that far. We are strictly in a land acquisition phase.
Other people with questions?
So this pretty much is just saying that the city is in on the project. That's all we're doing right now.
Yes, you are saying the city is willing to be the grant applicant, so that does put your name on the grant, yes. There's a little more to discuss and digest when it comes to a few things later on, but yes.
And so acquiring this would kind of reserve this corridor
Yes.
for a future trail.
You know, Brian Loffenberg was the vice president. I walked this years ago, and it's a beautiful piece of property. It's also on an old railroad bed. You know, there's not a lot that can be done with this property. It's low-lying, it's next to a stream, it follows our mission statement. So there's a lot of things we really, really like about this. All the board members are really strong support of acquiring these properties.
Any else with questions?
So as far as the process, so are we taking this in stages? That we're first gonna look for a resolution from the council?
Resolution of council is part of the grant. Yeah, inspiring community would write the grant, yep, so.
But what is, then it's, so we're not just approving the resolution? What are, I guess I'm a little confused about what else is being asked right now. I mean, when I see the fundraising, the cost of the properties, PCA slash city contribution, how is that?
Right, so I'm trying to break these up into three sections. Can we wait till the end to discuss that one?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so if there's no questions on the properties themselves, I'll switch to the Valley Road property then next. Okay, sorry, Ken, go ahead.
So cost of land, you got DRN, that's Department of Natural Resources? Contribution?
Oh, does it say, yeah, it's DNR?
Yeah, DRN.
Oh, typo.
So the total is $236,000 estimate.
The estimate is 236,000 at this time, yes.
That's including the Valley Road.
That is including the Valley Road lot, yes. So it could be reduced by 60,000 if we exclude the Valley Road lot. Let's jump to that lot next. I know there are some very good questions about that. To start with, we've had some parking issues at the quarry. Jim Rosemeyer's approached me a couple times about trucks leaving the quarry, and they've had some near misses with cars, and that Jim doesn't want people to park there. And then there's this, there is this debate or uncertainty of if cars can even park there legally where they are right now. The DNR is a 50-foot easement, but does that easement cross Jim Rosemeyer's entrance road? He does not think so, and he's probably right if you go down there and look at it, because it's not a straight line through there, okay? But he doesn't want cars to park there for liability reasons. If a truck hits a car, obviously, it's a problem. Jim Gabor is thinking about seal coating that area down there, and he approached me about the PCA helping with those costs. I don't want to do that. They're both fantastic neighbors. In fact, Jim Rosemeyer is one of the properties we're looking at on the east side. Jim Gabor has done a ton of great stuff down there. He's been great, but I just don't want to look at contributing to him seal coating that area. So his response is, you know, if I seal coat this, I don't want cars coming across this land to park on there. So this leaves us with this somewhat parking issue we're having. The Valley Road lot would be strictly like a parking, like a trailhead, I would call it, centerpiece trailhead. I was told that there's thought of expanding the dog park, and to do that was like 100,000 is what I'm hearing, and that would be done in five to seven years. To me, it just makes a little more economical sense or logical sense to buy the Valley Road lot and develop that, because it's 0.71 acres, so you get more bang for your buck, and it's also less expensive. If it's developed in five or seven years, it's probably going to cost more than 100,000. It's probably 125, 150. And if you buy the Valley Road lot, it also qualifies for an RTP grant through the DNR, which means they help you develop it, which it's a 50/50 match. So you could light it, you could put bathrooms down there, you could make it as fancy as you want, or you can make as minimal as you want, but the DNR would match at 50/50, which to me is enticing. So when you look at buying something for 30,000 and you can develop it at half price, we just think that this is a potentially good idea. We're not making this requirement for the grant, but we think the city council should discuss this, because to us, this made sense. Again, just about all the board members said, we think this is a good idea, but the city needs to think it's a good idea too. Okay? Last but not least.
So just a minute.
Sorry.
So on that 0.1, 0.7 acres or whatever it is, how many cars could actually park there?
I don't know the answer to that question.
It doesn't actually look very big. And I've been down there. I don't think it, I don't think it's very big, so I'm not sure how many cars.
How many cars can park in 0.71 acres? I bet we could deal with this really cool.
Dan? I have no clue, but it doesn't, I mean, I've walked past that. It doesn't look like it's very big for a lot of cars. Twenty, okay? All right, so discussion one was buying land to reserve a corridor from Business Highway 151 to East Side Road. Question, right?
Yes, yes.
And discussion point two was, but including purchasing a lot on Valley Road that might hold up to 20 cars as a trailhead.
Including Valley Road in the grant application.
And including that in the grant application, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Onward. Third is the cost. Is the city willing to contribute to the cost? Okay, I have got a number of emails and calls from people about this, about Valley Road and the cost of this. We are still including Valley Road, and then the cost, I kind of pulled back a bit. I know I requested some money earlier, and then people said, well, maybe you shouldn't do that, but I still think it's a good idea to the city to discuss this topic. The, I want to make this very clear, the Arboretum will move forward with this project and fund all of it if the city doesn't contribute anything, okay? But we strongly suggest the city do something. There are board members who say, well, it's not fair for the Arboretum to pay for all the survey work, all the appraisals, all the title work, all attorney fees, line up all landlords, pay for all land, and the city contributes nothing to something that's been a part of their plan for quite a while. And I think those voices should be heard, okay, I do. But I also realize you guys are under budget concerns. Everything costs money, okay? So what that arbitrary number is, or what that monetary value would be, whether it's $0 or all of it, I would let you guys discuss. I don't want to come in and demand like, we need this amount of money, we're not doing the project. But I do think it, I do think it warrants some merit. The city contributes something to this project.
Okay. We've heard from Joe. Comments, questions, concerns, suggestions? I think that's all I can think about. Kathy?
I have a question. So the land acquisition, is any of that within the city limits or is that township?
All of it's in city limits.
It's, everything is within city limits, okay.
Additional questions, comments?
What you're looking for from us monetarily is we don't have to pay the whole, you just want.
Yeah, I mean, you can, absolutely, you can pay the whole thing.
In your original stuff, Lynn, in the original material that we got, it said the PCA requests the city contribute 30,000 to this project, even if Valley Road has declined, and I think Joe has said that that.
I did send that message, but I got some feedback saying, hey, no way, don't do this. But I don't want to, yeah, I think the city contributes something. I have to speak for other board members. So I've had people reach out to me and say, the city should do something. So again, I'm going to say this again, I think those voices should be heard. But I'll say this again as well, we will move forward with the project if the city contributes nothing to it. But again, this piece of property, this east side, has been a part of your plan for quite a long time. Angie Wright sent me some stuff. It's been shown as a proposed trail in 2013 in the city's Township Comprehensive Plan, 2009 Safe Routes, 2022 Sidewalk Plan, 2004 Bike Pedestrian Plan. You know, we are here now, the pieces are lining up, like we are willing to kind of spearhead this charge, but it would be nice if the city takes some interest or some part in this project.
Does the resolution require the city at this point to say if they will, or is this a resolution simply allowing the submission of a grant application?
Right, so what I understood tonight is you guys have to make, the decision is final decision not made tonight, it's voted on next time.
Right.
What I'll tell you is the grant applicant deadline is May 1st.
Okay.
When we put the grant application is, we don't want to put it in without the city being like, you can do this. The last thing I do is like, I'm not going to sign your name to a grant and you guys not know about this. And
Understand that.
Part of the grant application is the resolution of council, which they're gonna, what you're basically saying then is, yes, we are willing to come up with this half of the funds for the project, and the DNR will come up with this half of the funds, I'm assuming.
Even if this half the funds is through private fundraising by you?
Yes. Yep, I think that's pretty common amongst the DNR.
Well, I see value in reserving the corridor. I don't know when there'll be additional development toward East Side Road, but I know we've had a couple of discussions about what the hospital might do with the land that.
Hospital's not one of the landowners.
No, I know, but they would be, if there were housing developed there, that would provide, I mean, that would provide trail access for people who might live there.
Yes, yes.
Yes, and I don't know about the other side of East Side Road, what's proposed there, but I can see value in reserving a corridor. If you don't reserve it now, you might not have a corridor.
I agree. I think we should go forward with the land acquisition from 151 to East Side Road.
I'm not as thrilled about the parking lot.
Grant application is due in May 1st, but when would?
When would I hear from what?
If you get the grant.
Oh, I did ask Cheryl that with my last DNR meeting. I think she said we would know by the end of August or September if we got the grant. And then I think we have one, or I can't remember, one calendar year or two calendar years to come up with the money.
Galistically, we wouldn't be looking at, more than likely, having our 2025 CIP better what, correct?
I don't think so. Okay. And is PCA standing the costs associated with writing the grant?
Inspiring community is. Cindy confirmed that with me.
Joe, PCA already has raised, or at least has commitments.
Right.
For like $20,000?
We have 40,000 right now in pledges and, and, yeah, capital.
Hey, folks, so my understanding is that we would have to take action on a resolution. So Joe has suggested that one option, or one part of his ask is reserving the corridor and the costs associated with that. A second is.
Should Valley Road be added?
Should Valley Road, does a parking lot be added? And the third, is the city willing to make a monetary commitment?
Yes.
I think those are the three questions. I'm in favor of the corridor. I'm not in favor of the parking lot. I'll save what I'm in favor of.
Certainly appears that it's important to reserve this corridor as quickly, I guess, as we can.
I'll say that's been the most challenging part, just because there was so many landowners involved, some that said no, some that didn't agree to praise values. Reserving the land was very, very challenging to get all, actually, I wanted to apply for this grant last year, and hearing one year later, it really took to get to this part. We, I should say, we.
Have to tap into any funds for a year, so, okay. Yeah, I mean.
Not that I know of. And we would have to, since it's a city grant application, it would say the city would would commit to, but our commitment can be to have PCA raise the money, right?
Just saying.
Yes.
That could be our commitment. Our commitment is to commit you. I like that kind of commitment. Maybe we could do the same thing with streets. Okay, any other, any questions of Joe? Anybody want to make comments? Anybody? Bob?
The only thing, Jim Gabor, when he said he wanted to seal coat that, he wanted to seal coat it, but he doesn't want us parking on it?
He said that if he seal coats it, he doesn't want traffic going through his lot to park there.
Then why does he want PCA to pay for part of that? I don't get that.
Because if he seal coats it, he wants us to pay for portions where the cars would be coming across, not the entire thing.
Are you okay with that?
No, I don't want to pay for that.
Oh.
I don't even know what you're talking about, when you say Jim Gabor.
Okay, do you know where the J. Net Stone is, the gravel area? Okay, so Jim Gabor owns that, and he's been awesome. He's done a lot of work down there. He's cleaned up that area really, really well. He wants to pave some of that gravel area or seal coat it. He's been doing a lot of water work to try to get water away from there, so his ultimate goal is to seal coat it. And he, because cars sometimes enter through that property to park in those stalls, he requested the PCA help pay for the seal coating. Again, this is, I'm not just like throwing Valley Road on there for, like, there's reasons why I look at this. I want to try to be a reasonable neighbor to these people, but this resolves issues for us that we are having right now.
And I appreciate you being a valuable neighbor, you know. No, seriously, like, if you considered this and you, I mean, I don't see a reason why, especially if it's something already that's been in the plan for us to come in with you guys if it's going to benefit the city in any way and the residents. I mean, I don't see, you thought it, you came and worked it out in your head and worked it out on paper and, yeah, you got it worked out. I would check for twenty.
Okay.
Yes, my only other question, Howard, the dog park, parking, to extend that would require the extension of the culvers, the culverts. And even without adding the trail going from Valley Ridge Road up past the skate park toward the museums, just extending the parking, moving the culverts out toward the stream to increase the depth of the parking, that alone would cost eighty to a hundred thousand dollars? Or was that including the trail extension from Valley Road up through the skate park?
I would have to go back to that. Yeah, the original, what we had looked at in the past was, as you alluded to, we had initially prepared some grants to do paving of the unimproved trail from the dog park up to the skate park, and at the same time, expand parking there at the dog park on Valley Road, in essence, making that the trailhead and additional parking for the dog park as part of DNR grants. Because of timing, because of funding considerations, those didn't happen. At this point in time, we've been focused on the trail sections going up to Mount View Park and Fairfield. So, you know, the PCA and/or the council could change priorities and make that a higher priority to do. But those would be, those would be grants. And if we did that, it would be like we are doing with the trail phases up through Mount View Park. They would be partially funded by DOT and partially funded by DNR, and the city would have minimal commitment. But as Joe mentioned, with the priorities that we've been doing, this wouldn't happen until two or three grant cycles, four, five, six years out. The same kind of funding would be available for a parking lot in this Valley Road parking area. They're similar, they're similar grants. So we would just have to figure out what the priorities are, where the money's coming from, and make the appropriate grant applications, whether it be sooner or later, depending on how our funding sources go.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Do we have enough information for everyone so that you know what's coming back? As I said, I favor preserving the corridor. I'm not so excited about the parking lot. And at this point in time, after our recent discussion about money, I'm not so sure about money either.
Just a question, how did they come to the value of that point seven acres along Valley Road?
So if you're going to apply for a DNR land acquisition grant, you have to get a specific DNR appraiser to come down and value the land. So I just couldn't get a local guy. Actually, I go to Madison. They have a list of appraisers they can use throughout the state. So we have, they will only accept appraisals from DNR certified appraisers.
Right, thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
All right. Well, that ends our information and discussion portion of the agenda. We do have a work session scheduled.